The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This meeting here, this is a special meeting here. There's only one thing on this list. And in this meeting here, there'll be no formal action taken. There will be no voting in this meeting whatsoever. Along with that, no public comment in this one. Because there's going to be a lot of information for this council to absorb. And with that, the items for consideration is Baker Tilly. Paige?
Good morning.
Morning.
So yes, you should have a draft copy of the report if I have you. And I just want to make a few opening comments before I go through this report. There's a lot of information in this report. I'm going to try to hit some of the high points.
Would you unmute your mic, please?
How do I unmute?
Okay, is it working? Oh, awesome.
Thank you.
That's much better. Okay, I just want to make a few opening comments. As you all, I'm sure, are aware, Senate Bill 1 made some white-sweeping changes to our property tax system. In addition, it made a lot of changes to the local income taxes. I'm going to go through some of that when I go through this report. But I want you to know that we are, we, Baker Tilly, are building a model internally to try to determine what all the moving parts will do to property tax, net assessed value, and also circuit breaker credits. That model isn't complete. I do have some rough estimates in this report. That's why it's still draft. We're probably a few weeks out from getting that model fully completed. There are so many moving parts with ag land, business personal property, the local income tax I mentioned, the homestead deductions. By the time we get to 2031, if you have a residential homestead, you'll only be paying one-third of your property value. Taxes on only one-third. So that really can affect our net assessed value. But again, we're working through all that. I do have some very preliminary numbers in here right now, but wanted to let you know that there'll be more changes to come. All right, so where I would like to start is on page number two. So there's two graphs here on page number two. Again, I'm going to hit the high points. We'd like to show you where you're at as far as circuit breaker credits now. So just kind of an overview of what circuit breakers are. That is a tax cap that you receive on your tax bill if your property tax bill reaches a certain limit. So we have 1%, 2%, and 3% limits here in the state. So residential homesteads, you are capped at 1% of your gross assessed value. So if the county calculates your tax bill and you exceed that cap, then you're going to get a credit. In other words, you're not going to pay some of your tax bill if you hit that cap. So it's really kind of the way you could view it as it's unpaid property taxes. So if you look at this chart at the top of the page here, in 2025, about 5.9% of what you levy is returned to the taxpayers in the form of credits. So if you look at 2025, you are currently levying $10.8 million. You will likely only collect about $10.2, $10,172,000. $633,000 is what doesn't get paid because of the circuit breaker credit. So to say it in simple terms, if we weren't in this environment of circuit breaker credits, you would have an additional $633,000 to spend in your operating funds. So unfortunately, the circuit breakers are here to stay. There is a possibility that these circuit breakers will increase due to Senate Bill 1, the changes made in Senate Bill 1. And we have put some increases in this report. You can see by 2029, we've increased that up to $935,000. Once we run it through the model, it might be higher. That may seem insane, but the reason why is because with all these homestead deductions and various things happening with ag land deductions and deductions of residential rental properties, that's going to maybe potentially drag down your net assessed value, which in turn would increase your property tax rates, which in turn could increase circuit breaker credits. So again, that's kind of what we needed to forecast out because by 2031 will be the full effect. A lot of these things will phase in over the next five or six years. I think 2026 is going to be the least impacted, but as we start ramping up, 2031 should be the most impacted. Moving down to the next chart on the bottom of that page is, just if you're interested, countywide, there's about $4.4 million of credits that are returned to the taxpayers. So taxpayers are getting a benefit to the $4.4 million on their property tax bills. Lawrence County, the county unit contributes to about 14.5%. Moving on to the next page, page number three, the chart at the top of the page. This chart is really very consistent with what we see all over the state of Indiana. And it's something that I think taxpayers sometimes don't understand. Your tax rates have actually gone down over the last four or five years, just like a lot of units in the state. So why are people paying more on their tax bills? It's because their property values have gone up. That's really the reason. So look at this chart. It compares your net assessed value to your tax rate. So in 2022, the county unit's tax rate was .5690, so almost 57 cents. In 2025, that tax rate is .4655. It's gone down by 18%. So again, tax rates aren't going up. It's the property values that have gone up that has caused the taxpayers' tax bills to increase. Now, the reason why your tax rate has gone down is because your net assessed value has grown at a pretty good rate since 2022. Your net assessed value in 2022 was $1.68 billion. It is now $2.3 billion. So as you know, you're limited to how much money you bring in. So when the assessed value goes up, that doesn't mean you bring in more property tax dollars. It simply means that you need a lower tax rate to generate your maximum tax dollars that you can bring in. So that's why your tax rate has gone down. The next section there on that page is local income taxes. So this is going to be very important because we are going to have a complete restructuring of the local income tax system starting in 2028. But I wanted you to see where you are right now because it's important to know that as we start estimating where you're going to be in the future. So in Lawrence County, the total local income tax rate is 1.75%. And that is made up of certified shares at 1%, which that revenue is deposited into your general fund and can be used for any county purpose. The second category is public safety local income tax at .25%. That is deposited in a separate lit public safety fund and can be used for public safety purposes. Those two combined equal 1.25%, but you also have a component that is a property tax relief local income tax, and that rate is .5%. That is a very good tax to have because that actually helps bring down your circuit breaker credits. Because this property tax relief credit is applied to the tax bill first, and then circuit breakers are applied. So that helps to keep those circuit breaker credits down. So all of that combined is 1.75%. The maximum that you can have in the expenditure rate category, which is the public safety and the certified shares together, is 2.5%. So you're well below that. Now, even though this local income tax structure is going to change, you could, if you wanted to, increase or enact another one of these current local income taxes for '26 and '27 if you wanted to. But by the end of 2027, all of these local income tax rates will expire, all of them. Public safety, certified shares, property tax relief. They will expire. You will not get that anymore. So in its place, there is going to be something called a county services local income tax. You, as a county council, have the ability of adopting that local income tax up to 1.2%. That is the maximum. Now, I will say this. In this report, we are estimating that you're only going to go to .9%, but you can go up to the full 1.2%. But .9% should be plenty to cover your budgetary needs. But we can discuss that as we get closer to '27 because you'll need to adopt this in 2027 for distribution in 2028. And you will have to renew the rate every year. These rates expire at the end of every year, so you're going to have to renew that rate every year. So again, let me just repeat that. You, as a county council, will have the ability to adopt a 1.2% county services rate. We, as, the assumptions we made in this report, you will adopt .9%. And if you look at the top of page number four, there's a paragraph that kind of talks about this. .9% will generate for your county unit alone, to put in the general fund, $11.3 million. Right now, you are generating for your public safety and certified shares, those two together, is about $6.2 million. So the 11.3 is quite a bit more, and you're still only at .9%. The reason why we picked .9%, and again, we can discuss this, we can work in all kinds of different things in this model, but we picked .9% because we basically backed into what we thought you needed as revenue to keep a strong cash reserve in your general fund and fund those things that are in public safety that you're going to have to now shift over to your general fund. Because that public safety lit fund's going to go away. So you're going to have to shift everything that you're paying out of there over to the general fund. So we incorporated all of that in there. You may decide that you want to go with a lower rate. But again, we've got this set up now so I can plug in different rates to see how that's going to impact your general fund. Any questions so far? Because this is a really big change. There are some other local income taxes that you can adopt. I think I brought a handout, but let me see. This might be easier because it is a confusing local income tax structure. If you just want to hand that down. So what I'm handing out, this is not in the report, but if we draw off a separate page. Because I think it's important to know that this is the biggest local income tax change I've seen in my career, and I've been at this for about 28 years. So what you're looking at here, I'll wait until it gets all the way down. The way we know local income taxes right now is completely changing. So again, you will have that county services rate that you'll put in the general fund and use for any purpose. You won't have that separate public safety anymore. You, as a county unit, can also adopt a .4% fire protection and EMS. Notice it doesn't say public safety. It says fire protection and EMS. That does not go to the county unit. You adopt it, but you have to distribute it out to fire protection districts, fire territories, municipal fire departments, and at your discretion, to township fire departments and volunteer fire departments. You can also adopt up to .2% for a non-municipal rate. That goes to townships, libraries, and some binding review units like airport authorities, maybe solid waste management district. That's up to you. Yeah?
Does the fire territory still have the ability to tax from their own, from the township?
Yes, the fire territory still has the ability to have their own property tax levy.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. There were some changes in the statute regarding fire territories, but that's probably a separate, a separate session for that. For municipalities less than 3,500 population, you will be able, a petition, they have to petition to you, but you will be able to adopt up to 1.2% to spread amongst those smaller municipalities. You only have one, I think it's, you let it. And then municipalities, so Bedford and Mitchell will be able to adopt their own. You guys don't have anything to do with that. They will adopt their own up to 1.2%. And I just put estimates, rough estimates there of what that would generate. So again, I've got rough estimates of what these would all generate. Some of them are going to be under the control of the county.
For those municipalities, that money that they would enact, go directly to them?
To them, yes. Their rate is based on the adjusted gross income of just the people living within their municipality. It goes directly to them, and they're going to need it because they're not going to get the certified shares that you would normally distribute to them. They're not going to get that public safety money anymore.
You said that included the last category, the 1.2?
Yes, the 1.2, the municipalities equal to or greater than 3,500 population. They can adopt their own.
Can that include in our area Bedford and Mitchell?
Yep, and I have those estimates on here. Bedford's about 3.7 million, Mitchell's about 743. Bedford, that's less than what they're getting now, so that's going to be difficult. Now, I want to say this, that this is a very complex local income tax structure because no longer are we distributing these shares based on levy. It used to be that the more you levy, the larger share you would get. Now it's based on some of these items like non-municipal, based on population. The municipalities, the adjusted gross income is just within that municipality. Well, the Department of Revenue is still trying to determine what the AGIs are, the adjusted gross income, by municipality because they have not done that in the past. It's always been by the county. So I say that because of the complexity. There could be changes that occur in the next legislative session. So this is what I know today. It could all change. But I wanted to kind of give you a heads up that if nothing changes right now, in 2027, by July 1st of 2027, these units can come in and petition you to establish like the non-municipal. So townships and libraries may be coming in to say, hey, we need you to adopt this. Or the municipalities less than 3,500 may come in and say, hey, we need you to adopt this. The cities, Bedford and Mitchell, they can do it all around. They don't need your input or approval or anything like that. So that's a lot of information. I know it's probably a little bit confusing, but that was just kind of a precursor or a heads up. Now, we did build in to your cash flows what the .9% would generate for county services, and I'll get to that. I have a lot of other things to get to before I get to that, but we built that in for you so you can see how that looks in your general fund. All right. So now I'm going to go to page five, and I'm going to quickly go through these pages because these are, these are an executive summary that primarily has a graph of ending cash balances. I'll get more in detail to each fund when we get to the larger cash flows. But if you have any questions, you can stop me, but I am going to go through these pretty quickly. So page number five, this is your general fund. Your general fund has actually been very stable and financially sound. Each one of these charts has a guardrail. The dotted red line is the lower end of that guardrail. It is what we call a 15% cash reserve. We don't want your cash balances to fall below 15%. That's the floor. The maximum is 50%, but that would be six months of cash reserves. Now, you can go above 50%, but if you do, you should be making plans of how to utilize that cash, and it's usually just for one-time capital purchases. You never want to use cash reserves for recurring costs such as salaries, wages, benefits. So you've been right in the middle there, which is great. That's what we want to see, and you're sustaining that. I wish I could show past, but we're only showing from 2022, but you're right there. So actually, at the end of 2022, your cash balance was about 4.8 million in the general fund, roughly about 25% or in that range. And then it actually increased in 2024 to 5.9 million. So that's fine. That's right where you need to be. We are showing a bit of a downward trend. I think one is just because, you know, we assume that you're going to spend 100% of your budget, and you may not do that, so it's starting to kind of go down a little bit. We also have the circuit breakers worked in as well. So by the end of 2027, it's possible you can drop down below the 15%, but the reason why it starts ramping back up is because we built in that .9% local income tax. You will have to adopt some local income tax, obviously, because you're not going to operate without it, but I think you're probably aware of that. So by the time we get to the end of 2029, you should be roughly 19% cash reserve. Still pretty strong, and we don't see any issues there. Page number six now is the aviation fund. So this fund looks a little strange, but it's just because of the cash going up and then back down. So at the end of 2022, there's about $32,000 of cash there. It jumped up in 2024 because you all allocated more property tax to the aviation fund, which is fine, you see that all the time, it goes up and down. We assumed in this report that you would just allocate enough property tax so that it would just maintain the cash. And we do that to make sure that all the funds, all your control funds, have enough property tax to operate. So we've got that maintained. It's above the 50%, so if there's any capital items, you could certainly use those receipts there. I don't see any issues with this fund at all, but that's why you see that weird, it goes, jumps up because you increased the property tax value, and then we put it back down to kind of where it needs to be. Page number seven is the health fund. So here, you have a lot of cash reserves in this fund. And it looks like you've started to reduce the levy allocation, which is what we would recommend. You probably need to keep that levy down until the cash reserves fall down to a good level, around 50% or less. And that's what we've assumed in this report. We're assuming that you will allow this fund to utilize its cash until you can get down to 25%, 20 to 25%. So that's why it looks like it's going down now. I will say this, though, probably by maybe 2030, you might have to allocate some more cash over there. I mean, not cash, you'll have to allocate more property tax levy over there. But this is, you know, during budget season, the auditor's office, and you all can allocate the levy as you see fit. And that's why we see a lot of times on health and reassessment in particular, we'll see the levy going up and down. This is not unusual. But I think here, you know, you should allocate that levy to general until you need it back in the health fund. And the health fund has plenty of reserves even to cover the minimum requirement for Health First Indiana. So no issues here, but that's why you're seeing that downward decline. It's due to the assumptions we made in the report. It's due to the assumptions we made in the report. The next fund on page eight is motor vehicle highway. So this fund is not funded with property tax. It is only funded with gas tax, which is the motor vehicle highway state distributions. It's been very healthy and, and stable and constant. In fact, it's, it's a little bit above the 50% cash reserve, so you have probably have a little bit there to do some one-time capital projects if you needed to. At the end of 2024, you have $1.7 million in that fund. So it's doing pretty good, don't see any issues there with that fund. And this fund will not be impacted by Senate Bill 1 changes, luckily. Page number nine is the reassessment fund. Again, kind of the weird up and down is because of the shifting of levies. The cash balances really are too high in this fund right now, so we've assumed like the other fund that you're going to utilize some of that cash, and then it'll just level off. So that's why the decline. And, and again, it's because you're shifting property tax levy. Some years it needs it, some years it doesn't. That's fine, we've just made the assumption that we're going to set the property tax levy at a rate that will have you above the 15% cash reserve. Page number 10 is your civil defense or emergency management fund. Cash balances are really high in that fund as well. And you do that, you had a property tax levy on this fund, but you took it off, which we would have recommended, take it off until you get those reserves down. When I say take it off, you're basically shifting it to general where you need the cash the most. So not an issue here, it's not like this department can't be funded, it's just, it's sitting on too much cash right now. So you're doing what you need to do, and you took, in 2025, you took the levy completely off of it. And you can always put it back, like that's not, it's not a problem. Next page is local road and street, page 11. So this one is funded only by the gas tax, so you don't have to worry about property tax implications here. It's been nice and healthy and steady. You don't get a whole lot of money in here every year, but you're using it just like you should be for the road materials and things of that, that nature. So it's, it's fine too. Okay, page number 12 is your local income tax public safety fund. And this, you know, in 2027, you see that the fund balance goes to completely zero because it will expire at the end of 2027. We have assumed that whatever remaining balance you have in this fund will be transferred to the general fund. I think it was 400 and some thousand, we'll see that on the cash flow when we get to there. So you can continue to spend out of this fund until it's depleted or let that transfer that we've assumed in this report, but you are going to have to transfer all of those expenses that you're paying right now for public safety over to your general fund because you won't have any more revenue coming into this fund. Page 13 is your riverboat fund. You get about $150,000 of receipts into this fund annually. We have it going up because we just based future budgets on what you're budgeting in 2025, but I see where sometimes you'll, you'll have a larger budget than other years. So this could fluctuate. You can use this fund for anything for the county. Page 14 is your statewide 911 fund. And when I compare this to other counties, you're doing much better than other counties because we have seen that this revenue isn't coming in as much as it has in the past. There's a little bit of a decline. But you, you all must be adjusting your budget appropriately because it's not, it's not this. It's not the downward trend that we were typically seeing. Might, I mean, I don't know for sure, but my guess is maybe you're paying for some of these items out of the general fund, I'm not sure. But if you're not, then you're doing a good job just managing this fund overall because this fund does not get property tax. It is just funded by that statewide 911 distribution, and you've been managing it fairly well. In fact, we've got some cash reserves in there if you had to do some capital outlays. I think you have some budgeted this year, and you spent some capital last year, so that's good. But you're well over about 50%. Page 15 is your motor vehicle highway restricted fund. Now, if you recall, you are required to put 50% of that gas tax in the motor vehicle, the regular highway fund, and then 50% into this restricted fund. And that's what this is. It's restricted to construction, reconstruction, and preservation of roads. So it's just specific projects. A lot of counties will use this as their matching grant for the CCMG, the community crossings. So you've got more than a 50% cash reserve. You've got, you have monies in there that you can use for capital projects if you need to. Cumulative bridge is on page 16. The reason why the cash is going up is because we, there wasn't any capital plans beyond, I think it was like 26 or something like that. We can, as you get further capital plans, bridge projects, we can work them into the model. But this is pretty typical. We'll see cash build up in a cumulative bridge fund, and then a big bridge project will happen, and then the cash goes back down. That's pretty typical. But again, another strong fund. I think that's the theme for this, is you have a lot of very strong, strong funds. Which is good, as we go into the changes with Senate Bill 1. Q Capital Development Fund is on page 17. So the Q Capital Development Fund is a great fund to have because it can be used for any capital project that you might think of. You have some good balances in there right now. It looks like you kind of spend it when you need it for, for capital items. At the end of 2024, you have $1.7 million in that fund. So we're just, it's showing an upward trend because we, we just had a capital plan up to a certain point, but we can obviously build in further capital items. One thing I forgot to mention on the Q Capital Development Fund is you are under the maximum rate. The maximum rate on that fund is point 0333. You are a little bit over a penny right now. If you wanted to reestablish that fund, you certainly could, and you could generate another $450,000 net of circuit breaker credits a year. So if there's some capital that you think you might be doing in the future, this would be a great way to get additional property tax revenue for capital. And the tax rate increase really depends on the net assessed value. If your net assessed value continues to grow, there may not be a tax rate increase.
Would you repeat that?
Yes, your Q Capital Development Fund, you, you can establish it up to point 0333. You are currently at, it's a little bit over a penny. I think it's point 014 or something. So you're about halfway there. If you reestablish up to the max, you could generate another $450,000 annually of revenue. Yeah. Okay, so now we can really get into the meat, and this is where we get into all of these numbers. So starting on page 22 is your general fund. And the general fund is the only one that's going to be divided up between two pages just because there's so many lines. But I have some things highlighted that I want to bring to your attention. First, all of these cash flows are set up the same. The top part is the operating receipts. The bottom part is the disbursements. And then if you go all the way down to the end, which on this one, at the very end, is we're going to show you the change in cash balance, the ending fund balance, and the operating reserves. So I've got these lines numbered, it's an index number, so I can point them out to you. So index number four, that's highlighted. It says estimated excess shortfall from Senate Bill 1. So this is the estimate that was provided to us by Legislative Services on what Senate Bill 1 was going to do to your county. And we've split it up among each of your control funds. So any fund that has a property tax levy, you're going to see this line. Again, these are very preliminary estimates. We tried to get what assumptions were used from Legislative Services, but they weren't willing to release that. But, but I, you know, it should have been what was passed as far as the business personal property and the deductions and all of that. We just couldn't see the detail. So we are going to, as I said, we're building that model, and we will update these projections. But anyway, let's look at this. It's, I told you that this, these things were going to be phased in over a number of years. Unfortunately, Legislative Services only went out to 2028, so we just flatlined 2028 to match 2029. But I do think 2029 is going to be more of a reduction. So what these represent, if you look at 2026, that negative 525, 942 that I have highlighted, that is the estimated reduction in your property tax revenue. So if you look at the very top line, line number two, it says general property tax. That's what we expect you will levy in 2026, about 8,791. We have the normal circuit breaker in there, about 505,000. That's what you would typically not collect. But now there's going to be an additional, possibly, 525,000 that you won't collect because of everything that happened with Senate Bill 1. Now, fortunately, you know, I think you're going to be able to absorb some of that. At least in the short term, you might absorb it in your cash reserves until you can adopt that new local income tax. I've seen shortfalls of a lot worse, so. I know this is a lot, but I've seen a lot worse. So I guess we can be thankful for that. The next thing I want to show you is on line 18, the lit county services. So this is where I said if you adopt point nine percent, starting in 2028, that should generate about $11.3 million. Your current certified shares that go into this fund is about 5.1 million, and that's on line 16, 5.1 million. So you're probably looking at this like, oh wow, that's doubled. Well, yes, but don't forget about that public safety that you're getting in the other fund, and you're going to have to move those expenses over here. So really, when you do all that, 11.3 is not like a whole bunch more. Again, you could probably come down a little bit on that rate if you wanted to, but what, what plans do you have that you aren't able to find right now? That's something we also want to talk to you about because maybe that 1.6 is where you need to be, or it might be something a little bit higher. Maybe you need to do 1%. Remember, you have up to 1.2%. 1.2% would generate about $15 million. So, yeah. So this is like discussions we'll probably need to have all the way through year 2026, just the planning as far as where do you want to be. And you'll have to readopt every year, so you can change the rate if you need to. So overall, operating receipts on line 25, we really focus on that numbers highlighted in blue because when we start talking about balanced budgets, we want you to balance your disbursements to these receipts. That's a balanced budget. So if I look at 2026, standing here right now, I would say for a balanced budget, you would want to have a budget of about 17.3 million. Well, that's less than what you have now. It's less than what you spent, I think, in 2024. So that's why I say you might have to, a couple of years, utilize some cash reserves to bridge the funding gap. But I would be cautious with your budget for 2026. Everyone's going to be cautious because there's a lot of unknowns still. And if you start adding recurring items to your budget that aren't sustainable into the future, that, that's not going to be a good thing. So I would say for 2026, use a lot of caution. You guys are strong, you've got some strong reserves. But if you start adding, let's say, a bunch of employees or give some big raises or something, and that's not sustainable, and that's, all the dust settles, you have larger losses than what we're showing here, that, it's just not going to be a good thing. So just be very cautious. So right now, I'm saying if you want a balanced budget, we're looking at 17.3. I don't know that that's doable just based on past expenditures, but, you know, that's remains to be seen. Going forward, though, once that local income tax is adopted, now your expense, now your receipts, starting in 2028, go up to 23.4 million. And we're estimating bringing in that lit public safety expenses on line 32, that's only another 1.6, 1.7 million. So you actually have a cash flow surplus at that point. So again, I think because you're in such good shape that you could, if you needed to utilize cash reserves to bridge some of those gaps, but I would only do it for not more than two years. And make sure you adopt your local income tax high enough that you can, you know, fully fund your budgets.
You know, you're saying a lot of you're in such good shape. That, that is very meaningful to hear of this because we've been having an awful lot of bad news about our inability to manage properly. So it's very good to hear you say that these different funds are in good shape.
I, I work with a lot of counties in the state, and I usually see these downward trends. You all, I've seen this, which is good, that's stable, that's stability. Or in some cases, this, a little bit. So I can tell that there is some financial, some good financial management going on here. If, if I couldn't, I would tell you, because I am always to the point. So, but that's why I'm saying please be cautious. Please be cautious. It's not, everything's, you know, going good right now, but there's a lot of changes that came out of Senate Bill 1 that are scary, quite frankly. They are very scary. You know, if I come here next month and these things on line four are way higher, then we might be having a different discussion. Like now you're going to have to adopt the local income tax at 1%. But at least you have that. I'm working with some counties where that 1.2% isn't even going to get them to where they're at right now. So you've, you've got some good things in your back pocket. So let's go to page 23. I have another item highlighted there in 2027, and that was what we think is going to be your remaining fund balance in your public safety lit fund that you can then shift over to your general fund. So that's a receipt in 2027. Again, you've got a couple of options. You can just spend it out of public safety till it's gone, or you can just go ahead and declare a fund dormant and transfer it over to general. Your ending fund balances, again, we already kind of looked at those, but I'll bring your attention to line 62, which is the orange line that is the operating balance percentage. So again, we say don't fall below, fall below the 15%. You guys have been at about 30% on average, which is pretty darn good. So that's what we want to see. If you're over 50%, like I said before, usually we're like, eh, you probably want to start making plans to utilize those reserves. So you haven't let your reserves get up too high. You're about where you need to be. But we want to keep you that way going forward. And in 2027, you see that it drops down to 7.4% because we assume that you're not going to make any changes to your budget, and you're going to dip into those cash reserves. But you don't have to do that. But I, I'm showing kind of worst-case scenario, but then you start bouncing back up. So again, there may be a couple of years, it's tight, but then we can get back to where we need to be. Now, I'm going to start moving a little bit quicker, unless you, you guys love these details and you want me to really go through a lot more. But I really, I want to spend most of my time on the general fund, obviously. But let's look at each of these funds now. Page 24, aviation. So again, there's a little bit of loss there, but we set the property tax levy at around 150, 160,000 to keep the disbursements fully funded and to keep the cash reserves where, where they're at primarily since the end of 2024. So nothing really to, to talk about there. Health fund, this is where there are some, I would say, excessive cash reserves. But you all have already been taking steps to try to mitigate that because you reduced the levy. So for instance, at the end of 2024, your cash reserves were 942,000. But your disbursements are only 471. So that's like a 200% cash reserve. That's, that's a lot. So what we recommend is that you just bump down that levy. You're not taking the levy away, you're just bumping it down and letting, drawing on those cash reserves to fund the budget. The budget's fully funded, there's no issues there. And as, as I stated, maybe in 2030 or 2031, you may have to shift some more levy back there. This is common, it happens. It's not an issue, but just letting you know that you have already taken steps to do that, so. Page 26 is the motor vehicle highway fund. Not a whole lot to point out there. There's not that Senate Bill 1 loss because it doesn't have property tax. So ending cash reserves in 2024 was 1.7 million, almost 60% cash reserve. Nice and healthy and stable. Reassessment is on page 27. Again, this is another fund that had some excessive cash reserves. You have already taken the steps to shift or reallocate your levy to the general fund. If the levy in 2024 was 499,000, now it's only 200,000. That's exactly what we would recommend. Reallocate that levy over to the general fund until you can get your cash reserves down. We assume that you would just put them down to 20% and just level off that property tax rate. So that, that one's good too. Twenty, um, page 28 is the emergency management or... Twenty, um, page twenty-eight is the emergency management or civil defense fund. Again, excessive cash reserves, when you look at how much is getting spent out of there, so you took the property tax levy off in 2025, and we kept it off at least through 2029, just to get those reserves down. But again, I keep, I want to keep reminding you that probably in 2030, you'll have to reallocate some levies. So we will be pulling from the general fund, that's usually where we pull it, but that's why I want a positive net cash flow in that general fund, because I know in the future, you may need to pull some. This is not a lot, but in total of all these funds, it might be through four hundred thousand. Okay, so now we're on to the special revenue funds, starting on page twenty-nine. So this is your local road and street fund, nice, strong cash reserve, you ended 2024 with about eight hundred and seven thousand, which is almost a ninety percent cash reserve. So you have some room in there if you need to do some capital projects, but you're spending it on what you should be spending it on. Page thirty is your local income tax public safety fund. So this is where we're ending it, basically, at the end of 2027. But it is good to note that on line fifteen, what you've been spending out of there is recurring items, so we do need to move those costs over to the general fund, and it'll probably be one point six, one point seven million dollars of costs that you'll need to now budget out of general. Page thirty-one is just your rainy day fund, I just wanted you to see what you have. In the rainy day fund, you've got two point two million, and people always ask me, well, how much should I have in that fund? Well, it kind of depends on what you have in the general fund. Because your general fund is so strong right now, this is just kind of some money you can set aside for emergencies. So it kind of depends on what you think might happen. You know, we don't, we don't know what happens with an emergency, but sometimes there's flooding, tornadoes, the roof gets damaged, that's things that you can pair out of this fund. So you've got a balance in there, if you build up a balance in your general fund that's over fifty percent, you can transfer some of that into the rainy day fund. You're not above fifty percent, so I wouldn't do anything right now, I would just hold on to this rainy day fund balance until you need it for an emergency. Page thirty-two is the rebel belt fund. You only get about a hundred and fifty thousand in that funding year. This is the fund that can be really used for any purpose. We did build in some capital outlays from your capital improvement plan into this fund. I mean, it's not a lot of money that you get every year, but you've got some monies in there in case you need to purchase some small capital items. Page thirty-three is the statewide nine-one-one fund. This one has some kind of excess reserves, but we can't shift any property tax, so just, if you've got some capital items that come up, feel free to, you know, are applicable to statewide nine-one-one, feel free to use the fund balance here. Ended 2024 with eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand roughly, but you're able to fund your budget without any issues, so that's good. And that's just funded solely from the state distributions. Page thirty-four is the motor vehicle highway restricted. You ended 2024 with about one point nine million, very strong cash reserve, so you can utilize that for capital items, road projects. The matching grant, we've built that in there on line nine, four hundred thousand dollars a year for the community crossings grant match, which is a good use for that fund, but you could also use it for projects as well. Page thirty-five, queueless average, because it is funded with property tax, we do have that Senate Bill One loss in there, it's about a hundred, almost two hundred thousand dollars. But you have sufficient cash reserves to cover those losses if you need to. And again, as we know of further projects, we can work them in. We did work in one of your capital projects, that's all we had, was four hundred and fifty-three thousand, but if there's others you would like for us to work in, we'll absolutely do that. Community capital development is on page thirty-six. And again, that one's funded with property tax, and we've got that shortfall due to Senate Bill One, it's small, like eighteen thousand in 2026, and then it ramps up to thirty-six thousand. You've got some good cash reserves in that fund for capital projects and replacements. And in fact, we built in, you had a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year, I don't remember what that was, but we built that in to your, to your disbursements line item. And now supplemental data, have I completely overwhelmed you? Yeah, it looks like I have. On page, starting on page thirty-seven through thirty-eight, I'm not going to redo this, don't worry. These are your major funds, and we have a description that is the statutory description as to what you can use these funds for, just for your reference. I find it, it's probably good if you're not sure what each one can be used for. Page thirty-nine, we always like to look at budget to actual, so how did you perform against your budget? And here's something I really like, again, is that you all, I can tell your budgets are accurate in the general fund, and there's no fluff in there. And the way I can tell that is because you spend anywhere between ninety-five and a hundred percent of your general fund budget. I like it, I like it a lot, because sometimes I go into counties and they're only spending eighty percent. That tells me that the budget really isn't that accurate, if you're every year only spending eighty percent of it. And then counties will tell me, well, we don't want to go through the additional appropriation process, it's not that difficult of a process. The reason why I like accurate budgets is because it's easier to manage. If you all come to me and say, hey, can we afford three percent raises? And you don't have an accurate budget, I may say, no, you're outspending your receipts, you can't afford that. But in reality, you can, because you're not spending your whole budget, see what I'm saying? But you have very accurate budgets in the general fund. Now, there's a few of these funds that are only spending eighty percent, they're in the red, highlighted in red, eighty-five percent. That, I'm not sure why that is, and we can maybe get into the details, but that tells me that each year, I mean, it's been consistent with some of these funds, they're not spending their whole budget. So again, we, I love to say, please build accurate budgets. There's been a misconception that's lasted for years, that you have to budget high to get your full maximum levy, to get all your property tax dollars, that's not true at all. Your property tax levy is set by the state, and let's just say, I'm just throwing numbers out, let's say it was a million dollars. Even if you budget zero, you're entitled to that million dollars, so you don't need to budget high. Continue budgeting the way you are, because I like to see this, that just tells me that your general fund has a very accurate budget. Way easier to manage. Page forty is just kind of a recap of all your cash balances, we just went through all of that. Page forty-one is the capital improvement fund that was given to us, and we can obviously extend this out or add some things to it, but it's kind of nice to see everything all on one page right now, where your capital plans are at. So I'm sure you probably have some questions for me. What question? Okay.
So the report we got last year, on page seven, the general fund is in the negative of a million three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, not counting the digits. So with this, I know it would probably happen, so that's a million, A M estimation, that figures, like this, at four point five million. But you're telling me that keep doing everything the same, and we're okay going into twenty-six?
In 2024, and I'm not sure, because I don't have that report with me, but negative, you had a negative net cash flow, I do remember that. The balance was good, but you had a negative net cash flow, because it looked like you were going to outspend your receipts by that amount. And in reality, you didn't end up doing that. So you outperformed, you know, I don't know if you got additional receipts that you weren't planning on, I'm not really sure, we can go back and look, but you, your budget was, you know, higher than what your estimated receipts were projected to be.
Right, but I'm just going, the projections we had ten months ago is nothing like what you're projecting right now.
And I think that's good, because you outperformed your budget last year. So are you saying that going forward, it was like that? Because I don't have that.
No, it's like the projection was in the graph.
So if you look.
Yeah, when you're projecting, where we're going, the projections going, actually, I think the terminology we're going to, actually, fill through all of our reserves by twenty twenty-seven, is the projection we had ten months ago.
Okay. I didn't work on that report ten months ago, but I don't know, we can, we can go back and look at that, but I feel pretty confident with what we have here.
Would the adjustment in the levies account for the?
It could, it could, it could be adjustments from where we swept levy from other funds, because I told you that you guys did that for 2025. We do, we do show a negative net cash flow on your report of almost two million dollars for 2026 and 2027, we're still showing up, and we are going to eat into your cash reserves. But that's, a lot of it has to do with the fact that you have circuit breaker losses that are, I mean, circuit breaker losses combined with Senate Bill One losses, that's going to be probably over a million dollars. Here's what I want to say to that also, is that you really need to look at the receipts on line twenty-five, because yes, if you budget more than your receipts, you will utilize those cash reserves. And if you look, we are showing that you estimated that you will be above those receipts by two million dollars.
Overspending by two million?
Yes, and that would cause your cash reserves to come down. But when it's all said and done, like in 2024, your receipts were eighteen million two sixty-five, you only spent eighteen million two zero seven.
But before you anticipate here, you're at two million dollar deficit going forward, the way these circuit breakers, some of these new tax breaks are going to go, move on and continue to go with it?
If you budget and spend nineteen million dollars. So again, I would need to look back at what you budgeted in 2024, that if you outspend your receipts, yes. And that's why I said, when I was on the general fund, remember, I said, hey, you've got seventeen point three to spend in 2026. That may be difficult to do, because you've been spending eighteen million. I think you've been budgeting closer to nineteen million. So yeah, thank you for bringing this up, though, because it's not all roses and butterflies, right? Because you need to stick to these operating receipts. But again, I said that before, it's, I think it's going to be difficult for you to operate under the seventeen point three. You may have to utilize cash reserves for a couple of years, in twenty-six and twenty-seven.
But you're also suggesting that we start shifting those excess levies to the general fund?
Right, which has already really occurred, you started doing that in 2025, but in 2030, you're going to have to go the opposite way.
Katie, or, Katie has a question?
Yes.
Katie, I realize you didn't do the study from ten months ago, but I remember when we were in here before, and we switched our levies, we were told that was not sustainable, that it cannot go and fund the general with how we switched them last.
Right, it's not sustainable. Probably around 2030, I, on all those funds, I said, when you shift it around 29, 2030, you'll have to shift it back to those funds.
But at that time, we will have.
How the new, we'll have the new local income tax.
But our shortfall queues continue to grow due to Senate Bill One.
It will, but I think you can set that local income tax at a rate that will cover that, and that's what the General Assembly wanted you to do. So point nine percent, I have shown in here, that will cover your deficits. So that, that's why this planning is going to be very critical, because yes, there are some shortfalls as far as you are, you could start outspending your receipts. So we want to make sure we set that local income tax at a level that is good, you know, decent for the taxpayers, not the max, because I don't think you're going to have to go to the max, but enough to cover these shortfalls.
I think there's our concern is finding out how much cutting we need to do to get back to that. Plus, at the same time, as you mentioned, raises, depending on the percentages, you know, that shoots us back to the direction. So how long are we going to be in a position where we can't look at those without doing some major cuts?
And that's why I say, say be very cautious. In 2026, if you want that balanced budget, I would say you need to be at seventeen point three. I just think that's going to be difficult for you, I really, really do. But seventeen point three, you won't utilize your cash reserves. Something else that's been happening over the last few years is you're getting supplemental local income tax, which we never know about until May, I think you've already gotten your distribution. But that's been, it was seven hundred and twenty-five thousand last year, and another six hundred and sixty-three thousand this year. That's coming to an end. Starting in 2028, there will be no more supplemental. So you guys have been getting that every year since at least 2022, that's extra money that we weren't even expecting. I don't even know if it was in that report, but.
Seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, you got?
Yeah, seven twenty, about seven twenty-two, five hundred in 2024. And this year, in May, you will be getting, if you haven't already gotten it, six hundred and sixty-three thousand. So that's been a little extra bonus, that's helped offset maybe that deficit a little bit.
And that won't be there in 26?
Uh, you may get it in 2026, starting in 2028, you will no longer get it, because it's going to go away. Starting in 2028.
What you were talking about there was those shoots when we went through those with the department head. You know, that target number there, which is really, really close, was seventeen twenty-three thousand, and you guys come in a little bit better on this one here. And I think what starts going is, we were under the assumption that we had two million dollar shortfall from last year.
Well, if you compare your budgets, what you budget to your receipts, it probably is around two million dollars. That's why I focus in on what is your operating receipts, it's about seventeen point three, seventeen point four million.
How can we be healthy if we're spreading two million?
You're not spending, that's just it, you're not spending that two million dollars. Either you're getting in more receipts, it's probably a combination of both, you're not, because in 2024, you spent eighteen point two million. And you had eighteen point two six five million of receipts. I mean, it's very possible we were conservative with our receipts, I don't know what we were showing as receipts for 2024, but we tend to be on the conservative side, hopefully, what I tell you is worst-case scenario, but in 2024, you, your actual receipts was eighteen million two sixty-five.
Okay, on this, for operating receipts for 2024, so sixteen million?
Very conservative. I mean, I can go back to see why we were so conservative, if it was circuit breaker or what, so there it is, you made it up in receipts primarily, but you spent right, you know, within your receipts.
I think that was the flip in the letters. I believe that's where the letters got moved.
Yeah, well, in 2025, they got moved, some of them did get moved in 24. Yep. Other questions?
Any questions for Paige? Cancel? I think you've done a great job. You made us a little better move than we were expecting.
It's a lot better.
Yeah, but again, I, be cautious. I mean, and while you mentioned, you know, that you brought up it, it's all about matching to the receipts. And if you don't do that, you will spend down your reserves. But thankfully, you have some reserves that will get you through the next couple of years, if, oh, thank you so much, if you have to. I don't like to see that, I don't want to see you using reserves, but if you have to, because again, I may come back here next month and have, you know, more losses to share.
If not, you use reserves, we need to be at seventeen point three.
I know, right, and that's not where you've been in a, you know, you've been budgeting well, I don't know that you have places you can cut, I'll just be honest with you. But if you think you can, yeah, that would be a great step to take, but you also have reserves, I mean, you might spend two mil, you might spend four million over the next few years, and that's going to put you down to that seven percent that I showed on the report, but I think you can bounce back up. Depending on what you do with the local income tax. And we can continue to run scenarios, like if you say, hey Paige, what would point eight do rather than point one? We can easily run that through and make sure, but I wanted to give you a cushion with that point nine, because I know two things. We're going to have to shift costs from public safety over to general, and number two, all those levies you transferred to those, or transferred to general, is going to have to go back, because it's not sustainable. It's not, but I told you that. But I told you that they.
They have to go back to right there.
They're going to have to go back to health, reassessment. Yes, you're going to have to shift those back. So yeah, it's not sustainable, but it, but you don't want to continue to have high levies on these funds that have excess balances. Put it back in general until it needs to go back. But as long as you know in the back of your mind that probably 2030, you're going to have to put that property tax back to those funds, you know, as long as we know that and we plan for it, then it's fine.
But even if you were moving those levies over to the general fund, you don't have to completely deplete them?
No, you don't. No, absolutely not. In fact, when we did this report, we made sure they did not drop below 15%. I think we kept them at 20 or 25%. Yeah. I think sometimes there's a fear of taking a levy completely off. Like you did that with emergency management. There's no fear with that at all. I thought that was a great plan because you can always move the levy back, and there was just too mu, there's just too much money in that fund right now. So let them use that money. That's what it's there for, right? So, yeah.
We're just, actually, those are just savings plans.
Yes, right. Exactly, precisely.
We're good. Any more questions? Counselor?
This has been good.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. As I said, this meeting ended. Thank you.